It is 5:15 on Monday, March 14th, 2016. And the Carroll City Council meeting is now in session. We shall now commence with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clay?
We'll get him on here in a minute.
Technical difficulty. You want to tell it all in attendance or you want me to wait till he's on?
Hello, this is Clay.
Clay, this is Dr. Jensen, how are you?
Hello, doctor, I'm doing well, thank you for calling me in today.
Good, I let Gerro run the numbers, so we're gonna, we're gonna get started?
Very good.
Alright, we've already done the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm gonna notify Laura that all are in attendance except Jerry, Councilman Fleischer. The first item is the Consent Agenda, which requires approval of the minutes of the February 23rd and March 7th meetings, approval of bills and claims, renewal of Class C liquor license with Sunday sales for the Carroll Moose Lodge #273, the acceptance of resignations of firefighters John Shreck and John Bruner, and approval of the appointment of Eric Khan and Justin Yetmar to begin duties as members of the Carroll Fire Department, volunteer fire department.
I move that we accept the Consent Agenda.
There is a motion in a second. Haley?
Yes.
Base? Yes. Benami?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Are there any oral requests or communications from the audience this evening of anything that's not on the agenda? If not, our first ordinance of the evening is an amendment to the Park's Recreation and Cultural Advisory Board. Jack?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second and third readings, we had the first reading at our last meeting. Since, since that first reading, I've had no calls or any, anyone in favor or against of this ordinance. But again, this just allows one of our Parks Rec. Culture Board members to be someone from the county. That'll be one, one position. We've had quite a few people have been real good over the years and we haven't been able to have them on the board because they live in the county.
Any comments or questions? Clay, you okay?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. I will seek a motion to review and waive the second and third readings of the amended Parks Recreation and Cultural Advisory Board ordinance as proposed.
So moved.
I need a second. Second.
Okay, there's a motion in second to waive the second and third reading. Cott?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Benami?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Motion to adopt the ordinance?
Second.
There's a motion to adopt the ordinance? Cott?
Yes.
Benami?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Wait for Jerry. Sign your order resolutions next. Our first resolution this evening is in agreement with the Iowa State Community Design Lab to develop a Carroll Recreation Master Plan, which includes the Graham Park, Carroll Recreation Center, and all of the athletic aquatic facilities within the complex adjacent to Graham Road. Jack, do you have anything more on that?
Is there anyone here representing this request tonight? Okay, I will go through this. Is someone back?
Oh, Barry's back.
Please, I'm sorry.
Barry?
Thank you very much. Part of the process that started maybe a year ago in talking about the idea of a district in that area. We have visited, Matt Raymakers and I have visited with the council in the past about it. We met with Iowa State and they were excited, their architectural school, and there's two schools involved, and I can't remember that, Design Lab. But they're, they're ready to go and they could get started within weeks. I think it's a big, big step. We see the Merchants Park, we see the athletic field planning that's going on, and I think it could be an opening for this community to develop a unique, unique area. A unique area already, but an area that really needs some work and some design and some marketing to pull it all together. So I think this is, this is a heck of a good start. And we thank you for, for considering that. It's interesting that the three schools, V Mac, Kemper, and Carroll have all agreed to pitch in because they see it's important for the facilities that they all use down there, everything from the rec center to the baseball, football, softball, and the swimming pool, so it's great. Thank you for your consideration.
And they're gonna take into consideration the design of the baseball field too?
Right.
Okay.
They're gonna look at that. And I talked to one of the guys early on that we wanna pick his brain for some ideas, some historic aspects of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? If not, I will seek a motion to approve the resolution entering into an agreement with the Iowa State Community Design Lab with the balance of the total to be paid by the City of Carroll.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Haley?
You're up to vote.
Haley?
Clay?
Haley?
Clay? Are you there, Clay?
Redial, I'm gonna see if we can go, is there a redial button? You can go ahead and ask me, but I'm afraid I wanna wait till Clay says yes or no before I decide on the vote, so.
Hello, this is Clay.
Clay, we're back with you.
Thank you for calling back.
Yep, you are up to vote.
So moved. Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Benami?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Thank you. Our second resolution is in regards to the Merchants Park Baseball Stadium Renovation Project 2016 with the report of the opening bid and award of the bid. Jack?
Thank you, Mayor. On March 1st, we had three bids, three construction companies for the baseball stadium renovation. This was the second time we went out to bid, the first time we had one bidder. This time we had three. All three of them acknowledged the bid security bond of 5%. There was two addendums in the project, they all acknowledged the addendums, and then total base bid was, Beatty Construction, $779,560, Rotor Construction, $709, Hinkle Construction Company, $948,200, and then there was five alternates to be considered in this project. The first one was alternate one, high-performance coating on the exterior walls, and you can follow all three bidders' prices for those. Expansion of the dugouts. You can see how those follow. Epoxy floor coating on the grandstand seating. This is a more, higher gloss, higher finish on the floor. It'll last a lot longer than the urethane. Composite wood decking and bleachers rather than just the wood decking. And then alternate five would be a credit if the city would have removed the existing bleachers and the support underneath the bleachers. And with that, the, towards the bottom, the total of all the alternates, as you can see, Beatty Construction, $106,300, Rotor Construction, $125,500, and Hinkle, $124,900. Now you have the total base bids with all the alternates, ranging from Beatty, $885,860, Rotor, $834,500, and then Hinkle was $1,073,100. And then we did, you saw the letter from Cheyde Hattery recommending that we take the base bid, alternates two, three, and four, for a total base bid, or for a total bid price, $831,000. And then you see the breakdown of all the revenue we have from the different funds, the booster clubs, the schools, grants, and then total expenses, and the new estimate with engineering, additional engineering that we'll have to complete the project, some miscellaneous demo, construction costs plus contingency, it's at $1,017,462. And with the revenue, we have remaining balance of $1,417. So it'd be my recommendation that the mayor and city council accept the bid from Rotor Construction in an amount of $831,000, which includes the base bids plus alternates two, three, and four.
Jack, can you state again what those alternates are?
Yes, the first one is expansion of the dugouts. Two is the epoxy floor coating at the grandstand. And then number four is the composite, the wood decking for the bleachers. You know, every couple of years, the guys need to sand the current bleachers, repaint them, that, that will minimize that, we won't have to do that. Epoxy floor, in the base bid, there's a urethane painting on the inside. This is a much more durable, longer-lasting painting. We feel that value was worth it. And then the expansion of the dugouts, right now they're pretty, pretty small for what the coaches and the schools are saying they needed.
I said experience with those epoxy floors that are professionally applied, that's very good stuff, that, that lasts very, very well, a lot better than any urethane paint I've ever experienced.
Thank you, Clay.
We've looked through all these options and we were willing to propose to you the additional funding from Hotel Motel and from local option sales tax so that we can accomplish these things that we feel are crucial. And then we're recommending to you that you take those as Jack has previously stated.
And the, the, so the composite wood seating will look like wood, is that correct?
Yes.
And it will last longer than just the regular wood?
Yes, yep. Again, like Gerro was mentioning, in the revenue, the Hotel Motel tax, additional $80,000 out of 17, yeah, of 17, then local option sales tax out of 17, $80,000. We put additional on the sides of this to point those out.
I move that we proceed as Mr. Wardell advises.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Haley?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Benami?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Do you need a motion to award the bid?
No, that's, that's.
That's all that happened, okay. Very good. Our third resolution is in regards to a $910,000 general obligation capital loan note, Series 2016A, Laura.
Yes, at our last council meeting, we took the bids for this debt issuance and United Baker of Iowa was the low bidder with a true interest rate of .75%. This is the last set of proceedings to close out this debt issuance process. There are two resolutions, the first one is to appoint the paying agent, note registrar, and a transfer agent, appointing Baker's Trust Company, which we've worked with them for numerous debt issuances in the past. And the second resolution authorizes the form of the loan agreement, and it also approves our tax exemption certificate. There are certain rules and regulations we have to abide by to have these, this debt or these capital loan notes to be tax exempt. A copy of that exemption certificate is, was included with your memo, and this is very common with our, any type of debt issuance that we've done, and I'm not aware of any instances where we have faltered or we are in non-compliance with it. So this is a very standard, these two resolutions are very standard in order to close us out. Closing on the debt is scheduled for March 23rd, and that's when we should get the final proceeds of the debt. Are there any questions?
If there are no further questions, I need a resolution appointing Baker's Trust Company of Des Moines to serve as paying agent, note registrar, and transfer agent, and approve the paying agent and note registrar and transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of the agreement.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion in a second. Fleischer?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Benami?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Then I will seek a resolution in approving and authorizing a form of loan agreement and authorizing the, providing for the issuance and levying the tax to pay the notes, and approval of the tax exemption certificate. So moved.
So moved.
There's a motion in a second. Haley?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Benami?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Thank you. Our fourth resolution is in regards to the High Ridge Road HMA resurfacing. Randy?
Okay, this is the night of the public hearing on the plans for the High Ridge Road resurfacing project. I don't know, do you wanna start the hearing first and, and then I'll proceed?
Uh, let's see, it's 5:31. 5:31, and I'll open a public hearing on the High Ridge Road HMA resurfacing.
Okay, on December 21st of last year, the plans for the High Ridge Road resurfacing project were submitted to the city. About a week and a half later, they were submitted to the DOT. This is a DOT let project because it includes federal aid as part of the funding. The plans were prepared by JEO Consulting Group, and they detail the work needed on the project, including storm sewer, water main, curb gutter, concrete patching, and asphalt resurfacing and other work necessary in two divisions. There's a Division One, which is 12th Street to 18th Street, that's partially federal aid funded. And there's a Division Two, which is 8th Street to 12th Street, which is 100% locally funded. The specifications, because it is being let by the DOT, the specifications are the Iowa DOT specifications and supplemental specifications. And because it's let by the DOT, the form of contract is, is their form of contract. The estimated cost for construction is, for both divisions, is about $956,000. Add to that the engineering costs brings the total project estimated cost to about $1.15 million. It is funded in both the current budget and next year's budget through road use tax, local option sales tax, and then a federal grant in the amount of $480,000. Bids will be received by the DOT tomorrow on the project, and following that, they will concur in a bid or recommend a bid award, and they will come back to the council for award, the final award of the contract. So unless there are any questions, I'd recommend approval of the resolution adopting the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the High Ridge Road resurfacing project.
Are there any questions or comments from the audience with regards to this? If not, I will close the public hearing at 5:34. And are there any comments or questions from the council?
Just that it was very nice to be in on the listening session the other day. It was great to see folks from the community turn out to engage us on this project as well as the 3rd street.
I would concur with that, Clay, thank you. If not, I'll seek a motion for consideration, approval of adopting the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the High Ridge Road HMA resurfacing project. So moved. Second.
There's a motion in a second. Seaman?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Benami?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Thank you. Finally, our fifth resolution is in regards to a contract for professional services for the city cemetery maintenance facility. Jack?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight we have a proposal from JEO Consulting Group here on Carroll. They helped us with the preliminary design that we had a few months ago. They went reviewed tonight. Again, we're reviewing a 2,400 square foot building. That's what we believe is necessary down there to house everything, all of our equipment, our trucks, everything we have. That'll give ample room for when families need to talk to our cemetery section. They have another room they can go into and, and talk about those, those things. With that, it's gonna be a metal building similar to what the Park's maintenance garage was. That one was 4,000 square feet, where again, it's be 2,400 square feet. Our estimate cost range is between $400,000 and $450,000. The bond will be for $480,000. For their services, lump sum fixed fee of $42,750. And obviously they have reimbursable expenses, things like that. So I guess if you have questions, I can sure answer anything that you have. Right now, like we showed at the meeting several months ago, our anticipation would be this building would be placed in the southeast corner of the cemetery. Would probably affect few of the community gardens, but we believe we can move those to the north side where the dirt piles are now and have some more community gardens if there is a need to keep the same number of plots that they've had in the past. And then we'd move the dirt down closer to the building or find another location for it. So hopefully we don't affect too many, any gardens, but we'll do whatever we can to put them in other places.
So they'll use that entrance right off of?
Clark.
Clark.
Yeah, possibly the plan that we showed before, there was a.
That would be Grant Road.
Grant and Clark.
Yeah, okay.
Possibly families that are coming in on Grant Road, they'll be able to park on the side where we feel like we'd probably use the Clark Street.
Clark Street, okay.
Our trucks and moving and hauling stuff that we need.
Okay. What's the plans for the existing buildings?
Uh, there's three buildings out there. At this point, there's, there's been a lot of discussion. The two outside buildings on, outside are probably remade, but that garage, we'd probably remove that, that's had a lot of wear. The other two bellies have a lot of historical presence, so we'd probably try to keep them and utilize them. Possibly bathrooms for the public.
Seems to me like I thought one of those buildings had bathroom facilities in it, but I don't think it was usable.
They have, yeah, there's one.
They have one?
Lot of it for the staff.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll seek a motion for the consideration and approval of a resolution accepting the contract for professional services from JEO Consulting Group Incorporated for the Carroll Cemetery Maintenance Building Design.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion in a second. Haley?
Yes.
Benami?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fleischer is approved.
And we will then move to reports. And our first report is in regards to an appointment of Brooke Mickelson to the Park's Recreation and Cultural Advisory Board. Gerro?
We have no comments except what has already been said, that this is a person who lives outside the city limits, falls within the parameter of the recently adopted change in the ordinance, like recent, like a few moments ago, so.
Generally, this would be a good sound agenda, but we have to do it as a president's first.
Ordinance first, yes.
Yep.
Alright, any questions or comments from the council? If not, I'll need a motion to appoint Brooke Mickelson to the Park's Recreation and Cultural Advisory Board for an unexpired term, expiring May 31st, 2016. So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Benami?
Yes.
Cott? Motion is approved.
Our second report is on Street Resurfacing 2015 Change Order Number One. Randy?
Thank you. During the construction of the Street Resurfacing project last year, we encountered five sanitary sewer services that conflicted with the construction of the storm sewer on the project. But we did have to relocate those five services so that storm sewer construction could continue. And we've now rolled those into the proposed change order on the contract. And they're individually listed with their pricing in your memorandum. And that, in addition to the fact that we did sell to the contractor some trench backfill material from the city stockpile, that's also included in this change order with a net cost of the change order at $18,958.10. And that brings the total contract cost to just over $1.15 million for that project, construction project. So unless there are any questions, I'd recommend approval of this change order to the Street Resurfacing contract.
Any other expected change orders, or is this probably the last?
No, there will be at least one more.
At least one more, okay.
We have previously approved the construction of the alley off the north of 8th Street. And we decided at the time that it would be a change order to this contract. It has not been constructed yet, planned to be this spring, and so it'll come as a change order on the cost of that. That, that we do expect.
Okay. Any questions or comments? If not, I'll seek a motion for consideration and approval for the change order number one to the Street Resurfacing 2015 contract. So moved. Second.
There's a motion in a second. Benami?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
And our third report is on the Industrial Park Road Sanitary Sewer Service Connection. Randy?
Yes, thank you. During the development of the joint public improvement agreement with the Carroll County Solid Waste Management Commission, there was some discussion about the sewer services on that project. There was no action taken at the time pending the development of more information. At this time, the commission is initiating the design work on that project, and so a response to them on the sanitary sewer services is probably timely right now. Our current code of ordinance is Chapter 9505, would, does require mandatory connection under the requirements of that code section to the sanitary sewer line. So any properties that fall within the requirements of that code in this subdivision that the sewer will pass through will be required in the future to connect to the service line. The, but some of the discussion at the time of the agreement revolved around assessing the cost or creating a sewer hookup fee or a charge to connect to this sewer. The sewer is estimated to cost the city portion about $150,000. And it does run almost 3,100 linear feet. So the cost per linear foot, if there were a sewer charge per linear foot, would be approximately $25 per front foot of lot. Now that's one method of charging a sewer connection fee. There, there are several, it could be a flat fee if desired, or no fee if desired to the adjacent property owners. But at this point, just wanted to bring the information forward to you to, for an indication of how or if you wanted to create a sewer connection fee to this sewer. of how or if you wanted to create a sewer connection fee to this sewer. And if so, that connection fee would come back to you next meeting in the form of an ordinance for consideration. The cost, if it's a linear foot cost that you desire, if at all, will vary according to lot width, of course. And the lots out there, wide variation in width. They're from less than 100 to over 300. So the original plating had many of the lots at 300 linear feet footage. And of course, those have been vacated, but a cost at $25 a foot would be $7,500 on a linear foot basis. So I guess it's really proposed to you for your consideration and determination whether you'd want to recoup any or all of the funding on the project.
Randy, there are some that would say that it doesn't cost anything to hook onto the sewer line in, like in new development area. Can you explain how that happens?
Well, in our subdivision, in new development areas, the services, water and sewer street, are all constructed by the developers and then dedicated to the city. So no cost out of pocket for the initial construction of the facilities. But in all practicality, the only way that they can pay for them is to make them part of the cost of the lot when they sell it. So in the case of this subdivision, there was no sanitary sewer constructed, so in all probability, there was no cost allocated for construction or for lot purchase to the construction of the sanitary sewer. And in doing it this way, or if you put a fee on it now, would be kind of a after the fact recovery of the cost that the city lays out for construction of the sewer.
I guess I'd rather have that later on now, ahead of time, before you start getting in an argument, someone starts to develop, at least it's all spelled out.
Yeah, I think that's only fair to a potential lot buyer in the future to know this information and seller also.
Proactive solution instead of a reactive solution.
And if there's a potential user, utilize, someone utilizing these lots, how do they find that out? When, at what point will they find out that there is a charge? Who's gonna tell them?
Well, it would be by city...
Because I'm saying 10 years from now, when this is all forgotten.
Well, that would be by city code. So how would it show up? There's prob... I'm not sure if there's a fail-safe way to do that, whether something would be recorded against the lots. I guess that's something that could be solved out. I know that in history has had a couple of these sewers in them that had had by code a connection fee. And I know that those were only done because someone remembered that it was in the city code. You know, that's just the way it is. I'm not sure if anything can be recorded and picked up in abstracting or not. That's something that we would have to investigate. But a minimum action by the council would be by code to make it public knowledge.
I would think your building department would be responsible for that, too, Randy, wouldn't they? Keeping track of that?
But that would be at the time of requesting a building from them, not at the time of the sale of the lot. Because generally, people don't come to us, well Greg is gone now, but from the experience that I've had listening to them, generally, people don't come to us before they buy the lot. And generally, they don't even come by the rates of billing from that because the builder doesn't. But in some cases, they will have inquiries, but not very many. And unfortunately, this is one of those situations that there is no fail-safe way except to have a sign that says you'll have to pursue when you buy this lot, which will either fade or be destroyed.
Well, that's my concern is, I can see someone developing a property 10 years from now and they don't pay, and then 15 years from now, somebody remembers it and says, hey, you owe this money. Then the first person didn't pay, so...
Well, they're gonna have to, if they're gonna connect to the city sewer, they're gonna have to get permission to do that. So that would trigger them to come in and ask.
And that's, my question is, who's gonna tell them? Who's gonna remember to tell them? Is it...
It'll be your job from here on out.
Well, I...
Admittedly nominated.
I think currently, there's probably about half the lots that are already developed with a septic or no, no, no bathroom facilities. There's a fair amount of septics. And Randy and I have chatted about this. What would probably happen is when the septic system needs to be upgraded, then they'd have an option of going on the city sewer line or paying for upgrading the septic system. Or if the ordinance is written as such, would mean that you cannot, you cannot install a septic system. You're required to enter when that time comes. Now, we depend upon the language. So there will be confusion, there's no doubt about it. But we need to remember, and this is just for factual purposes, that that area was developed with an understanding that there would be sewer lines built there. And on two occasions, not to say anybody's at fault, the city council did waive those rights to build that sewer line. So it's been waived. Now, we're in a situation where we're paying for it. We, meaning all of the users of the sewer system, are paying for it. Do we want to be appropriately compensated, or at least partially compensated for that, or do we want to say, you're lucky?
Do we contact the current owners that, and notify them, hey, that the service is available? And then the undeveloped lots, do you contact the owner and just tell them, refer to ordinance 9505 when you sell the lot?
Sure, that could be done. That would not be difficult to do. Now, the current owners, if they're occupants, they'll know the sewer's going in. I mean, it'll go right through the driveways, but...
Yeah, they'll know what's going in.
Yeah. But they could be contacted once it's completed, sure. Yeah, that's not a problem.
Is there any intention of contacting the current developed areas out there and seeing if they want to attach now? Or no?
That can be done also, sure. We have plans to contact them regarding the construction in any case. And that invitation can be made also.
And again, the main purpose for wanting to do this is because of installing a tap without having to break the line, right?
I'm not sure if that'll be done. In all, because of the way this property has been platted, vacated, replatted, vacated, replatted, the locations that we put taps in are probably a low percentage chance of being used. And in today's sewers, you can tap them firmly and safely. So we would probably defer that, why taps, to a tap once the sewer, once the use is established, yeah.
I guess I don't have a problem with trying to recoup some of that cost for people that are using it at some point in time.
I think you're kind of asking us to make a decision on what to do, right? Would we be better served for Randy to give us three options or something?
We'll make the motion to have him come up with the ordinance, and then it'll come back to us again.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, I guess what's driving this tonight is to find out what your inclination is and maybe what direction we want to go, whether it's, first, the decision is service fee or not. And then if it's a service fee, you know, what do you like? Do you like just a flat fee of a number of dollars or $25 a foot, or 15 a foot, or 10 a foot? You know, depending on how much, I guess, you want to recoup from the original construction cost. You know, a part of it, all of it? And actually, you know, the 150,000 is 50% of the cost, really, because the commission is paying half of the cost of this line as well as their full cost of their service line, pressure line.
So do you, would you like us to be specific, or do you want to come back with two or three options for us to look at?
Well, at this point, it's, I think if you're inclined to want to recoup the money, the two basic options are flat fee of whatever or linear foot fee. And then the next decision is, how much do you want to recoup? You know, recoup all of it or a part, you know, 50% of it? We'll prepare the technicalities of the ordinance based on that, but as a, as a policy decision, kind of, how much do you want? You know, if you're...
Well, basically, you're just looking for a generalized motion to establish, and then you'll come up with some solutions.
Well, we'll come up with the technical language of the ordinance, but as far as the dollar amount of the ordinance, we'd like a little direction on how much you want to recoup. I mean, it's, at $25 a foot, you'd recoup all of it if everybody connected. If 50% recoup that much money is enough, we'd bring it in at 12 and a half, or 10, or whatever, whatever you desire. But I think that's the amount that you want to recoup of the money that you expend is probably the policy decision. I mean, that's, that's kind of what it is. The technicality of the ordinance, we'll get those worked out and get it back to you.
So $25 per linear square front foot would give you the most recoverable...
That would be approximately, if everyone connected, that would basically get you 150,000 back over a long term.
I would suggest that if we don't hear anything, you prepare an ordinance with $25 a running foot.
Sure.
So you don't want to, you don't need a motion or anything for that?
Yeah, we'll bring back the ordinance.
Just bring back the ordinance, and then we'll go from there. Okay.
How, how much would that be for each, each owner? What's that come out to, your 25 per linear foot, Randy?
Well, it really depends on the lot width, but like I say, the original plating of the subdivision was approximately 300 feet frontage on each lot. So if that were the case, if a person bought 300 front feet now of undeveloped land, that would be $7,500.
So if you have a 300-foot lot, Clay, you'd end up paying $7,500 to connect to the sewer.
And that would only be at half of the price if we were installing it on our own.
You'd expect 15,000 if we were gonna do it. And you'd probably expect to pay more if you were purchasing it with a developer who would already put it into the price of a lot, I would assume.
That's probably the reason why it didn't get built. We will do so.
All right. Our fourth report is on the potential real estate gift from Commercial Savings Bank. And Gerald?
For the purpose of some people who have not seen this memo, I will highlight it and also for the council members, that the subject of this is about the Commercial Savings Bank offered a gift real estate located at 627 North Adams to the city quoting from the offer, "to be used by the city only in order to facilitate expansion of library." So we'll make sure that that's a premise of any discussion henceforth. Now, there may, there's different ways of accomplishing that, but there's one way proposed in here. We initially received this request or this offer on February 23rd, and you voted unanimously to direct myself, and I work with staff and other people, to come up with some kind of a report that would give you some sense of the things that need to be done in order to move fructantly forward with this. By the way, there might be some other people in the audience that want to make comments about this, and the mayor can receive those comments if he chooses to. I've talked to a lot of people, mostly from them asking or making comments to me, or I solicited from some. With the technical people, I did specifically seek out conversations, and particularly with the person who represented the gift that was given. And we know that there's been a lot of discussion about the library project, and this is the latest and most recent one that we have available to us. Now, I have conferred with, I'll just repeat here again what I referred to, the agent of record for property and casualty insurance. Reason for this is that when you receive a gift and you make moves to do certain things, you need some reasonable assurance that the building will be there when you get to that point. Doesn't mean that they're going to denigrate the building or do any of those things, but what happens with a fire, windstorm, or an explosion? You know, will you have a building? Because you're, you're building your decisions based upon having a building to go to. So hopefully that never happens. But we would probably need, and David would be involved in that, some kind of assurance that either we, and we can't double insure the building, I've checked that already, so you can't double insure it. So we have to be assured that there's some insurance to make sure that the building is still there.
So that'll fall on Commercial Savings Bank?
That's gonna be part of our agreement that David will probably put together. And they're gonna have insurance anyway.
Right.
They're not gonna have, go naked on the building. I think there are three things to keep in mind about the particular offer that are not negotiable. The city cannot sell property within five years of transfer. City cannot sell property to another financial institution. We'll have to have maybe a little discussion about, well, how you define a financial institution. Property to be used by city only in order to facilitate expansion of library. And then I listed out for you those potential steps that would probably need to take place so that we can get to a point, what I would call due diligence, and you can feel at least comfortable enough to go ahead and make a decision to move forward. And that's not what I'm asking you to do tonight. You decide what you want to do tonight, hopefully direct us to move forward. But the first one is conduct an environmental site assessment, phase one, and asbestos survey of the current facility, the bank building. Then engage a professional to examine the structural integrity of that same building. And engage a professional to examine the total structure and provide a concept plan and estimated cost to adapt to the needs of the citizens and the staff. And that would be of two buildings, the bank building and also this facility here, if you were to expand the library. Because I'm guessing that you're going to want to have some kind of an idea of, is it adaptable? Can you make some changes? And what would be some guestimates, or maybe better estimates of what the cost would be? Then determine that if parking is needed, additional parking on the property that they currently are gifting to us, there is some other property that we could purchase for a fee. And then, of course, you need to determine the methods of funding, adaptation or renovation. That doesn't, that's not necessarily crucial to the first things, the experts reviewing the building, reviewing all the buildings and determining what is feasible in those buildings. And then, of course, determine if the preparation tasks, other preparation tasks that are needed to meet the stipulations of the offer. We'll make sure that everyone understands that I'm not telling you that this is an all-inclusive review, nor are all the recommendations inclusive of what needs to be done. And then the next thing is, and I bolded it and underlined it, that a projected time schedule would start us now, we start in February, we're into March, if you affirm the intention to accept this offer tonight and move forward, and that's agreeable with the donor, then we would take some steps, and I would estimate that this could run out through 2019 and potentially into 2020. So there's a lot of steps that need to take place in the process. None is any more crucial than others, because once you make one step, then you make another, and then you make another, and you just keep going. And there will be some unexpected things, I would totally anticipate that. Randy's worked with a lot of projects, not so much buildings, but when you work underground, it's almost impossible to know what's there. And even in a building that both the one, the donor, and the donee, being the city, we don't know for sure what exactly you'll run into. That's why you have a structural review of the facility. There's a lot of moving pieces and a tremendous amount of challenges involved in this process. I would tell you that the city has not been afraid of taking on huge challenges. I was not present here, but some of you may have been, or you know people who were through the first urban renewal project and the second urban renewal project, which was completed just shortly before my arrival in 1994. So you've heard the stories and you know the challenges that go with that. And it's a very complicated, and you have to be very tenacious to continue through that, so. If you want me to comment on some of this, or offer you some more background, I've had at least one lengthy conversation with a donor, and I've had other smaller conversations with people involved with the family that is making the donation. Questions, comments?
I saw Jacob come in.
Hey, Jacob, I got, just for the purposes of the city, the council, and just getting it out, general knowledge, where is...
it out, general knowledge, where is the, where are the trustees in this?
Um, well, I guess, for the record, we, our last meeting was the fifteenth of February, and this gift was presented the twenty-third. So I could tell you what, I personally am very excited about this, and I think it's a, it's a great resolution for everybody. Um, I've talked with several of my constituents individually that show some support, but we do have five of the board members here today. If you would like a verbal kind of commitment, we just haven't had a-
I think it's from you?
Yeah, we just haven't had a-
Did you represent them, huh?
Right, we just haven't had a meeting where we actually voted on it, so I don't want to speak out of place, but um, there's not been any, nobody's contacted me with any concerns or anything of that nature.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Any questions? And I know I, Mitch, I know, I, Mitch had given us a letter, and it looks like the foundation, you want me to just read what you got here, Mitch? I mean, it's, the, the Library Foundation will basically conduct further fundraising efforts to provide private funding to expand the Carroll Public Library at the current site. To me, I guess that's an acknowledgement that they are for proceeding with the project too. So we've got, I think, secured both of the support of the foundation and the trustees, which to me, that's ninety-five percent of, I think, just other than us, I think that that should pretty much set it to go. All right. Paul isn't here, is he?
No.
Okay.
But they're representatives from Ryan.
Oh, oh. Ryan, where are you guys as far as, I guess, securing architect and that stuff? I don't want to, you know, if something falls through, I don't want to get us so far into the project from a financial standpoint, and you guys can't waddle through, so.
On behalf of the bank, I think we're at a point where you're ready to take that next step with an architect and, and move forward once we know that, that the city's on board with it, so, um, you know, if we have that confirmation, then, then we'll go back to, yeah, we have two architects we've got narrowed down to, so we can move forward with one of those and, and proceed accordingly.
I guess as long as we got that commitment, I mean, I don't see any reason why we can't move forward then.
Excellent. So, on behalf of the bank, we're, assuming that that's the confirmation and the resolution tonight, we're excited to be a part of it, and hopefully, I'll work together to resolve it. Any questions for the bank, or anything else?
I just wanted that confirmation that, that's where you're, you guys are headed, so.
I just want to thank you and, and your staff that helped us with the walkthrough also, Ryan. It was timely, but it was really worthwhile. It's really good, thank you.
And are doors open if the city needs access or if you're planning to let us know?
Any other questions or comments?
I guess I'd just like to make the comment that, from everything that I've heard, or everything that I've been talking to individuals, there's potential gifts of, of two million on the side of the library, which I don't know, that number's just thrown out there, and then another million dollars from the, from the family to donate this building, so, I mean, the city's staring down three million dollars in donations from individuals. We definitely have to move forward to, to get this done, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Brian, this is Clay. I'm curious, and thank you and your family so much again for your generosity. It, are you, do you know, are you and your family comfortable moving forward with us through this process? I, I know it's arduous, and we have to be cautious of due diligence, but I just kind of want to be respectful and make sure that, that this is okay for you.
Yeah, I, on behalf of the bank, as long as we have a, you know, a good faith intention from the city that, that it's, you know, they're fully committed to move forward with their due diligence and their process, then we will do the same.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Do you want a motion to accept?
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate, that we have a motion.
Then I will seek a, well, let me ask you, are there any other questions or comments from anybody else?
I, I would just add one thing, that I've had a lot of people contact me about this, most, all, almost all positive about it, and they never once forgot to thank the bank at the time for your generosity, so. The people out in the community recognize that this is a big deal for you to do this.
Like I said, we're, we're excited to be a part of it, and hopefully get a, get a completion.
If not, I will seek a motion to accept the gift of the real estate from the Commercial Savings Bank.
Second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second? Benami?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Flaschner?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you.
I will proceed to bring you some opportunities to engage in contracts with persons to look at the environmental site assessment phase one, the asbestos survey. Uh, I don't know how soon we can get to a professional to do some structural review, and maybe the same thing on a concept plan with both of the facilities, but I will move forward on them as quickly as I can. We had three weeks between the last time, and we only have two between the next, so I'm not sure we can get all that put together. I've had some discussions with Randy about what companies we might be talking to, and what kind of timeframe it might take, but we'll bring some things back to you in the next meeting.
Very good. Uh, I trust everyone has read the committee reports, and again, I would like to thank everyone this evening for a very productive meeting, and looking forward to what the future brings towards the library project. Any comments from the city council? If not, we can proceed into the trails workshop, unless you want to take a five-minute break? We haven't been here all night yet. Ready to go? Oh, I've got five fifteen on my watch.
We haven't started.
Pull out a little bit.
Yeah.
He throws them out?
Yeah.
Thank you.
We have a, we have a, we have a, I'll just, uh, we can be-
Oh, you had it.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was the summary of the point.
Oh, did you get us word, Ryan? I don't know. I signed it once in here today. All at the bottom that they don't sign it, but all the, the, yeah. I wanted to say, so. I don't, well. You look like Darth Vader. That's kind of how it looks like. Darth Citizen. I feel better just as we've cleared, yes.
This is perfect.
You gonna stay for the trails workshop, CJ?
Just stay.
Oh, you, you're more welcome to stay for the trails workshop. I'd love to hear what you have to say.
Community reports, anonymous information.
Oh, thanks.
We're done, yep, we're already through that.
Oh, with new class, geez.
See if we have an extra one.
Oh, thank you, Jackson.
You want coffee?
You're after coffee.
Okay.
That looks like coffee, too.
Yeah.
This is going to be killer.
Oh, no.
You ask, you get. Thank you.
That's right.
Still there, Clay?
Clay?
Oh, yeah, I'm here. You can't hear me that easy.
Well, if you need to go take a bathroom break, you got a couple of minutes yet.
Who says he isn't?
I'm not going to go there.
Too much information.
Jerry's medicated, so he's got an excuse.
I'm not broken, it's clear.
See what, what the council wants for direction, and where they want to proceed.
That's the main thing.
Uh, you back, Clay? Still there?
I never left.
Oh, thank you, sir. We'll get started with the trails workshop then. Go ahead, Jen.
All right, thank you. Um, per request, the city council, in a February meeting, it was requested to ask Chad Hattery to come back and discuss the trails with you. We have a workshop. Again, they've been the ones we've really been working with since two thousand and six. We did work on the Northeast Trails Plan with them, and that was the development of this, and we have had, they completed that project, and they're coming up on their time just to help us a little bit more, um, to facilitate maybe what direction we want to go, which segments we want to attack or go after, um, with that. So I can start out, if there's any reviews or anything that you want, um, otherwise Jennifer and David could lead us, you know, forward, glad to be happy to answer any pre-questions you might have. We did, real quick, uh, last Thursday, we had a meeting with potential users of the trails. We had bikers, walkers, runners, I tried to incorporate all three of those different groups. We had a good meeting, Carolyn was there, uh, Mayor was there, um, we had good discussions. I don't know if either one of you want to make an opening comment as far as what you heard at the meeting. Um, I heard a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of excitement about developing trails. We was very excited about the Soft Rail Trail, but there's components missing within the city. There's things, uh, that we need to connect, parks, schools, um, and to the Soft Trail existing. So there's a lot of enthusiasm out there. You've heard me mention this before, when I look at parks, recreation, websites for their surveys, number one activity is running, biking, walking, and Trails incorporates those activities, and, um, we're excited to look at that, um, going forward.
Well, even, uh, just some of those that were there do go throughout the state, uh, that travel for their job, and so they're down in Des Moines, or they're over by Clinton or Dubuque, and they access the trail system there. Um, I was down in Des Moines, was that two weeks ago, week and a half ago, and A, there's a council member over in Ames, they bring their scout troop over to Swan Lake, this is their third trip. They are required to bicycle fifty miles for their merit badge, and so they come to the park, come to Swan Lake, spend the night, get up and start biking, and then come back and spend the weekend. And this is the third time that that's done that, so they're coming over from Ames, I mean, and, so it's a good draw.
I guess, everybody that I talked to who attended that, and, and I'm constantly getting calls, we're just ready to get started and need, and I don't know where we should start, uh, but we need some guidance and from Jack, you two. We have money dedicated in the upcoming budget, as well as the eighty thousand for, um, that, um, link going up Main Street, and so I think we just need some guidance. I don't know what the rest of you are thinking as far as where it would, where we could get started, what makes sense, uh, where we could get bang for the buck, um, and, uh, just, we need to get started, that's what I'm hearing.
I did, I did go down to that Whitney Street, at the end of Whitney Street, I did go down there, and the trail comes right, it's like ten feet.
It's close.
Oh, yeah, it ends.
I've got some pictures I took on my phone, I mean, there's, there's a way, and we talked about incorporating that, and with that Third Street Road Project, that, um, that way you're not tying up, I mean, it's, you're not doing a third year where now you're putting a trail in.
Yeah.
Are you talking about something, adding a different link up to the downtown?
Yes, instead of going down Main Street, there was, uh, was it Russ, Russ Reinicki, I think, brought it forward and explained to Jack, if you go-
I know where you mean, I've had people bring that up as well.
Bring that up before, and we'll have to talk to the current landowner, but I think the way Randy was talking, we have a significant amount of right-of-way up Whitney and to Third Street, going, coming out there by Denny's. Am I correct?
It dead, Mike, that, it dead ends right down by Goody's Land, that Whitney, it's a, and then you just dead end, and there's Goody's-
And the trails, and people are already coming up that trail, coming up through the woodchip area, they're already, and then coming up through to the downtown area.
But you need, but people are using that coming in from the west, and some people that live in another part of town are already doing, have already started doing it, and cutting through, you know, the, the land, Goody's Land. But coming up from the parks, uh, Rolling Hills Park, we would still need that, and some signage and whatever, for, to bring people in from, from the other side, like coming from Swan Lake, you know, coming from, like, behind where I live, and then the tennis courts, you have the asphalt, and then it continues up a ways on Main Street, and then you cross Main Street and head out on the Soft Rail Trail to the west, so. We need to come up on Main, but also, this other brings people in from the west side, like if you're coming from Breda or Maple River, whatever, yeah. Yeah, Russ Reinicki brought it up, I, he was thinking about coming tonight, I don't know if he'll be able to.
He said he'd drive it.
Oh, oh, Frank, you're here, I didn't see you. Oh, I didn't see you, thanks, Frank.
Yeah, I was going to make it the other night, so. But, uh, yeah, I already talked to Larry Goody about two, three months ago about using his property, and he was all good with that, so, I, we're just trying to get him downtown without crossing Seventy-One, and so far, that's what they've been trying to do, and I see that as a virtual disaster eventually.
What's that, Frank? The disaster?
Well, John, you know, a lot of them just take off through, uh, um-
Cross Seventy-One?
Well, they, they go across Seventy-One on Third Street.
Where do they get off over?
They get off on, uh, Poulance Access.
Okay.
And they just come up, then they just go straight over on Seven, on Third Street. And that's just not a real safe way to go.
Right.
It just isn't, so.
Well, then you'd go under Seventy-One and then cut off, yeah.
Yeah, and then just, what I always thought was, that was such an easy way to get them up there, and then if they just move up to Third Street, if that's available, and we're going to make it wider anyway, and if possible for bike lanes, if that's possible on a trucking lane like that, it's just an easy way to bring them up, and then you have signs pointing to what's up north off of Third Street.
It keeps trail users off the street, because that's a heavily trucked road with Jergens right there.
Yeah, and so you bypass that whole section, and I'm not sure what road to bring them north on, but you'd have to decide that, I mean, there's, there's at least two roads coming up that are less traveled, that there's nobody on them.
Seems like anything's better than Seventy-One.
Well, I just see that that is going to be a major catastrophe someday, I mean, you know, that's not, but, but that's just to get them away from that and bring them in somehow, and we just, what, what we're trying to do is, we're just trying to fix that area up too, to give us, we, bikers tell me all the time, we don't have to claim the trial, and they tell me all the time, they don't know where Carroll is, and I go, they don't know where Carroll is. We have nothing that says, "Welcome to Carroll Island."
No, I, I even offered to put a sign that says Ankeny out there, just for the purposes of throwing a whole thing out of, yeah.
So, you know-
Nobody knows it's Carroll when they, because you're, you're sitting down so low on that trail, if you don't know, you don't, you don't see the city.
I mean, a lot of them don't get to, we put up that kiosk down at Rolling Hills Park, and maybe that wasn't, but that's where the big rock was that we, or the big slate that we put down and put everybody's names and gave money to it, but, uh, it just isn't where people get to. Now, of course, Swan Lake people see it, and we got a city map there and shows them how to get downtown, we have everything, there's a trail map there and everything else, but most people coming from the west have no idea what's going on, and they don't get to see that area and get downtown, and that's-
We can't really publicize this Whitney exit since it's on someone's property yet.
No. No.
Right, so we can't say, oh, go up through Mr. Goody's yard, up to Carol.
There's a tip box on the tree.
It's word of mouth right now.
Yeah, I understand, so.
That was actually gonna be my, my question, was are Goody's, when he says they're okay there, is he okay with you using, or is he okay with everybody using?
No, he, we, I talked about, you know, if we repaved something through there, and I don't know how the street comes down and what he owns and what the city actually owns, because the street actually stops there. Now, does the city still own part of that end? I don't know.
See, what would be, I'm gonna make it my goal to go on there, because I haven't been on it for a long time, but, what would, what would be so bad about going to our own land, which would be where the water treatment facility there is? Where the water storage area is? That's only a block over from Whitney. Is there some reason people wouldn't go just up there? Is it just because the hill's so steep? Coming up that road, you know what I mean?
Well, you're talking about where water, where the water park is coming up that steep hill?
Yes, it's just because it's so steep?
No, it wouldn't have it.
That's, that's why though.
It'd be very difficult for people to find that hill.
Well, I think it too, it's path of least resistance as well. Then you'd have to go all the way around the curve and then back up and over. Or here, they could just go right off and, right up there.
It's, it's like a five foot difference between, five foot, maybe five foot high difference between the end of the road and the trail. But you got about ten feet, maybe twenty feet from the trail up to the street, so it's just, it, I mean, I, I got a picture of it.
I'd like to see it.
Yeah, so standing on the trail looking north. So there's, you can see the sign there where it says Whitney. If you get too far, you see a Jurassic sign, that's my kids.
Okay, so, is it right next to this fence?
There's that underby passage by the convenience store.
And that's where people are coming up to his.
It used to be Caddy's, I can't remember what it's called now.
And then this one's very far. And I mean, you pass, you mean past seventy-one or thirty?
No, or talking, you're talking about getting people to downtown, so once they're downtown, how are they getting across thirty? Where, where is the?
Oh, I was, I thought you said seventy-one.
Right, I mean, because for me, it's about big, big picture, like, I look at being able to take my kids, and, I mean, we're gonna go downtown, but we're not gonna shop. We're not gonna stop and get bags, and, you know, we might get ice cream at Sam's or something like that, but then we're gonna be on the move. And so it's like, for me, it's a big picture, like, where's the full circle? Where can I get on, ride all the way around town and come back? So how do I get across thirty at a good spot and keep going? You know what I mean?
There, I know, um, I, I've had people suggest to me, but I don't know if it would work. Um, they would love a pedestrian overpass at Grant Road. I've heard that all fall when I was door knocking.
Well, that should probably be part of the Iowa State thing.
Yeah, I, that's what I was thinking, that's...
We need to remember to bring that to them.
Well, and the Iowa State thing says to hook the Sock Rail Trail, there's a bullet in there.
It's right in this area right here.
Let's make sure everyone's stuck at St. Mary.
Is that a turnabout?
Yeah.
Okay, count the streets up, from Highway seventy-one, how far east of it are you gonna put the road?
Oh.
It's like two blocks.
Two blocks.
Right, how far from there to Main Street? That's another five.
Two, three, four.
Four, four to Carol Street.
Oh, so you can't.
And then drop by Carol and Main.
To Main.
Four blocks from there to Main?
Yeah.
So if you come up on Whitney Street, you're going to go four blocks east to Main?
On, on Third.
No, you come off.
I think it'd be more of the bed.
I guess I'm confused, which way you're trying to count.
Well, you come across Goody, and take Crawford up to Third, and then.
You take Bluff.
Bluff.
Take Bluff Street would be where you'd come off.
Okay, so you don't go to Third, Bluff.
Yeah, that's Bluff Street. And then the question is how far you bring them up before you turn them north? That's up to you now.
There's, it's, it's, we, there's a, there's a lot more area that, uh, right away to the city on Third Street.
Yes.
So I, if you take them up two blocks to, um, Third Street, and then take them down Third to Denny's, and then you take a left and you're right there at the...
Well, that's what I'm saying, in Carol Street, you got a lot of traffic. I would turn them up before that, one of those small.
There's no railroad crossing in there. Only place is Carol.
No, I'm talking about when you bring them in a block, and then you turn them up on Third Street, at least you're bypassing Jergens.
No, you're actually going up Whitney. It's Whitney Street all the way up to Third.
How about we go through, just measuring out the distance that's currently proposed from the trail at the base, which may or may not be desirable because you have to go up a hill. How far is that a distance approximately from what's proposed to?
Where's the existing railroad tracks left?
Let's talk about two railroad tracks. How far is it from the trail where it crosses on Main Street?
We estimated where the trail curves up to the top of Bluff Street was about two hundred and fifty feet, and we had an estimate, a rough estimate of fifteen, twenty thousand with engineering. To have the trail go out to Bluff Street.
We're not advocating, we're just talking about.
You mean from Rolling Hills?
From Rolling Hills Park up to Bluff.
Is that the paving of the sidewalk?
Hat, what do you mean?
I noticed.
We're back on Main Street.
Okay, I noticed that there, oh, go ahead Carol. Um, on the original plan, it says a, uh, you know, are we talking about the eighty thousand? Are we, that?
Are we talking about eighty thousand?
That we dedicated.
Main Street.
Okay, I went.
And Denny's goes up going all the way across railroad tracks.
Oh, okay, okay. But we're talking about doing the sharrows, doing the signs, this is a lot cheaper. Okay, um, I, I measured the trail. And, it, it says here, the cost is, um, okay, the eighty thousand is based on the painted bike lanes, which we are not doing now. Plus a ten-foot shared use path, and that's the sidewalk coming up, stops at Bluff. The path itself is only eight feet. The asphalt sock rail trail that goes behind my house and then north of the tennis courts is only eight feet wide. Then, you know, it's narrow, but then it widens. It's only eight feet wide at its widest point. And then, you know, and then it crosses, that's the white line, then it crosses, and then the sock rail trail continues west. It, you have to cross Main Street. But the pink, um, where, where it crosses, it becomes narrow, that's, that's only four feet now. So, we do not have a ten-foot wide trail. It's only eight feet wide. So, what, what I suggest is that we change the four-foot wide skinny li, there's a lot of foot traffic with bikes and walkers and joggers. It's really, really busy, and especially after work when it's nice, to convert the four-foot wide trail as you come up, um, where it's narrow now, to eight feet. Then, I know the other night Matt Gredeman mentioned, well, you have the problem with the retaining wall, um, you know, and, so I measured, yeah. So when you go up, okay, the skinny part that's four feet, change it to eight, but then at the retaining wall, just leave it what it is. It's already five feet wide. It's really nice. And then it, it's, you know, it's wide as it goes around Kurt's house, Baumhover's house. So, is that making sense? No? Can I show you?
Yeah, I, I guess I feel, I understand.
Well, it's, I mean, it just looks, I mean, it's not only bad looking, it just is not safe with all the people in there going off in the street, yeah.
One thing to keep in mind, um, eight feet used to be the minimum with, that's recommended for trail design, but with all the multiple uses that are out there now, and a lot of bikes, the, the, the common bicycles that take up more space. Ten foot is really the minimum recommended trail width, and some communities are even going to twelve foot when they go up.
Okay, right, I, I know that, but what we already have there, that's a part of the trail before, you know, as you're starting to go north up the hill, it's eight feet wide. Now, the bridge that goes over the river, I measured to the chain link fence, that is nine feet wide. Then, then, you know, you cross and continue on the sock rail trail. Then it goes from, you know, it goes from eight feet to nine feet, down to four feet, and then to five feet. I, so, I don't care, we need to do something, somebody decide. Do you want to go to ten or?
What I kind of do is determine, how far is it from what's currently proposed with the new idea? How much, now, I'm not thinking about cost, I'm just thinking, how much link is involved?
From Rolling Hills Park to the railroad track would be one, two, three, three and a half, four blocks. And then from Whitney, if we go over the west side, where we, if we did the Goody right away, next street you come out on right there is Whitney, or is that?
Whitney would be one of the options.
Whitney's north, south, left.
Yeah, so if you went from Whitney to West Third, how many blocks is that?
Three.
One, two, three?
No, three blocks.
Three, and then west?
East.
East, I'm sorry.
East.
Probably about four to get to Main.
Four, approximately. Five, so eight compared to five.
Hey, Jack?
Yes, Clay?
One of those blocks was pretty, uh, pretty short it looked like to me.
Okay.
Little east to west, between Crawford and Northwest Street.
Okay.
There's another street in there, I don't see a name on, on the map, I'm wondering.
I'm guessing this way, a couple things involved that are important. One is safety, that's safety for both the rider and the vehicle on the roadway, if it's a shared roadway. Then secondly, then comes in cost, and then feasibility, you know, how many bikers will actually use this other proposed route? I have mixed comments from people. Some say, I wouldn't take that route, and some say, I wouldn't take any route, because I'm not gonna stop. Now, those are probably the hardcore bikers.
So I guess what route you mean? You mean the Goody route?
Any route that comes off of the trail. There's not interest in going downtown.
Yeah, well, I just know that there's a lot of people out there on the weekends that are not even from this region, and they probably wouldn't go downtown.
Sure.
Yeah.
I count ninety to a hundred every weekend. Now, that's not like you got down in Des Moines, but, you have that many people, and there's very rarely is it locals.
Yeah, a lot of them are out at Swan Lake and they're biking. I'm on the trail a lot, and...
Just, let me ask this question about being, being computational or saying it's bad. Why would people, what, what's the value of taking them downtown?
For food, for, um...
Is it economics? Is it hospitality? Is it something else?
Well, I, we, I guess, I fight for years. I fight for years, and we always go into town. You always see what's in town. I mean, it's, wherever we go for, you know, I don't know how many chakras you're gonna get, I don't know how many people are gonna, you know, they're gonna look for hotels, what we got in the hotels right downtown. So, that's gonna be a little difficult to get them up to the hotels, but, people like to take off right from their hotel, go biking, well, that's almost impossible, Carol. They gotta drive to a trailhead, and right now, we don't have a whole lot of trailhead space in Carol. So, that's why we're looking at Houland's Access and trying to do more there.
Yeah, hey Frank, just to kind of piggyback on Carol's question, this is, this is the thing I've struggled with, and I'm not a trails person, so, this is where the question comes from. When, when I start hearing about, you know, people biking going downtown, what I visualize is, I don't see people going and riding bike carrying grocery bags and shopping bags. Is, is that a fair assessment?
Sure.
So basically, what we want to do is bring them in to show them, Carol, possibly eat at our restaurants, things like that.
That's what we're bringing downtown, basically.
The other, the other thing too is that, you know, if they are staying out at Swan Lake, and they bike into town, they may drive in that night.
They do.
That's what I would think. They're gonna explore the town.
But they're gonna explore with their bike. They're exercising, and they're getting out looking, and where can we go eat tonight? So, let's get on our bike, I, I mean...
Well, I had, I had a group of people that have come here probably every year, and they, they come three, four times, and there's like forty of them in this group, and I doubt that they're all married. But they stay at the Carrollton, and they come and bike this region all the time. They said it's impossible to get around Carol. Well, that's true, and I don't think you can change that a hundred percent. But, we want to invite people down to our downtown. We don't want them just going through the south part of Carol and saying, where is it? They'll come downtown, what they'll come down a hundred percent for, I would assume food mostly.
As a biker, and you're an avid biker, at least I would describe you as an avid biker. They tell me that you, you can go many miles, I can't come. So, let's, let's call you an avid biker. Uh, how important is it that, uh, you know, if you do it once, will you do it twice? Will you do it ten? Will you do it twenty? Will you do it fifty times? Or will you do it once or twice?
You mean coming down?
And you as a biker, yeah.
As a biker, I, every time I'm in town, I try to go to every town. When I'm, I mean, we've done Minnesota, Russ and I, and we've done a lot of different trails. Now, how many people will do it? I have no idea what will come downtown, but if you don't provide it, they don't come.
Sure.
To me, people are missing out, and they are coming in, and they're coming downtown. They're just taking routes that may not definitely be unsafe, so.
Help me become a little more educated. What do you find in other communities? Is it closer to the downtown? Is it easier to get to the downtown? Or are most of the?
Went right through the middle of downtown, and of course, we're not coming out on actual railroad property. You know, as, you know, a lot of railroads, a lot of bike trails come right through the middle of downtown, so they don't have to worry about it. Their trail's just there.
Are they mostly smaller communities?
Yes.
Towns of our size, have you had experience in any of that would be comparable? Not, just trying to explore what goes on.
Jefferson has had signs leading people into downtown for, for a couple of ye, couple of years, haven't they?
Well, you know, Lakeview, you can, they're sites of older ones, and they got them.
All, oh my gosh.
They get them downtown, and, you know, they, they go downtown. They, they go downtown to eat, they go downtown to drink, they, you know, not everybody agrees what you want them to come for, but they're going. And so, you just gotta somehow get them.
Well, how, how do you get there in these other communities? Is there a specific trail, or is it marked, or you just, you're out on the street and you?
Well, Lakeview comes in, when they come in on their side, they come in and you go on the street, and then they have another trail that comes up through the middle of downtown, and then it stops right in the middle.
So they don't have a continuous connection?
No, they do not have a continuous.
They have signage though, so you go off trail, and then you cut and go, you know, kind of weave around, and you're on the streets, but they aren't that busy, and then you eventually are downtown, and then you're back on the trail.
So sign, I'm hearing signage has been fairly important.
Signage is a big thing.
That's very inexpensive signage.
To actually see what's there, how far is it? Those are the two main things that people want to know as they're coming through. Is there, are there restaurant facilities here? Are there restaurants? Is there someplace that I'd like to go have a refreshment at? They want to know that, they want to know how far to get to as well.
That's why we picked that Chamber map as our city map, because it basically lists all the restaurants, the hotels, the convenience stores. You know, all those things are listed for people to come down and, and shows where to go to get, to get to them. So, you know, I, I just, you know, I've heard a lot about Main Street, and I know that Main Street is, would be the greatest place in the world to bring them down, because it's the best looking street we have in Carol to bring them downtown. But if you can't get them on it, it's pretty hard to bring them down that street. That's, and the sun across, it's unfortunate, and I think there's other ways to bring them downtown.
Sure.
Without having been on Whitney, this is the second alternative that was just proposed tonight, uh, you know, I, I know how Main Street is. I know the elevation right after you get off the trail on Main Street. Is Whitney the same? Is that a little bit easier grade?
Yeah, there's, there's about a, it's probably about a, about a ten-foot difference between the, where the trail is and the street level, but it's about twenty feet from the trail up, so you're...
But then from there.
And then it's just a gradual slope up to Third Street.
Did you get off the hill?
That might be a little bit easier or more attractive versus looking out at a mountain hill. I'm not that hungry, I'll pass on it.
I remember that hill before they graded it down, and, and you were really pumping on a ten-speed just to get up that hill.
Main Street's more of a pro, Main Street's more of a problem going down than it is going up. Because if you got a family with little kids, and you're facing that hill, how do you get them down the hill? You gotta walk them down, and so you don't go down it. And same thing with going up, how do you get the kids up the hill? But, the biggest danger is going down it. You gotta look at it both ways.
How would we deal with the safety, and again, just asking questions, how do we deal with the safety of, say, young children? Maybe s, uh, children with a, a, uh, helpers on a bicycle, and they're with their parents, or they're with somebody else? When we go, when we take people off, and I don't know, Randy and David would probably have to address this, do we raise our level of risk, well, excuse me, do we raise our level of liability? There's always risk, no matter what you do. We want to manage risk. Is it, you know, do, will we have a higher liability by stretching them in an area that might appear to be more exposed? Or is it just one of those things, if you're going to do this, you're gonna have to accept some risk? I'm a believer that you manage risk, you don't avoid it, and you don't eliminate it.
I, I can address that. I think the best way is go off-street. If you're going on, uh, the other alternative, Whitney and, and, uh, Third Street, you just go totally off-street.
To avoid the traffic altogether.
Avoid the traffic.
That's always the best.
Just keep them out of the roadway.
I, you know, you, when you look at it, you're thinking of going down Third Street, that way, there's no... That way, there's no steep hill, there's, there's driveways, but not that many. There's no steep areas coming for driveways down to the road, they're all gradual, so you should be able to put a off-street trail there. Uh, going south of Whitney the same way, and then over from Bluff to, which is a certain distance from Bluff over to the trail. The other thing is, is Whitney should have a easement, how far, how wide is the easement normally off the curb?
It's pretty wide on, no, Whitney, I don't know, isn't very wide, is it?
Whitney's really wide.
Whitney would be forty foot half width. But there is a section that it is, it's narrower.
I guess what the point I'm making is that, is you've got an easement from, of the trail, not just the trail, but whatever is purchased from the city or the county, you've got that width, plus you've got the width of, of, of Bluff. And there really isn't a whole lot of property, that's private property.
After Third Street, what route would you continue north on, would you take them all the way over to Main Street?
You go south, well, north.
Yeah, if you're, if you're coming from the trail, you're going to the downtown.
Yeah, you come across Whitney, would be four blocks north.
Yep, and then Third Street.
And then Third Street to Main.
I, I even looked at, Russ, I even looked at Carroll Street, just stopping right there at Denny's. And at the bike shops right there.
Right.
And, you know, that's always open. And I bet they would be more than happy to have traffic come through there.
All of those are great alternatives.
But you got two blocks to go to Santa Maria, you got Culvers, Pizza Ranch, I mean, there's all sorts of things, and, and, uh, you're not having to deal with the wide width of Main Street downtown, and a lot of the parking and people backing up there.
You can drop them off on Carroll Street and Third Street, and let them go wherever they want. And you save some money, because you got one less block that you'd be making careful of, why? And then they can go, you put signage and let them go wherever they want.
The depot's right down there, I mean, there's that...
It's just the best way to come.
Yeah, the old depot's there, and they've got some parking, and there's the roof, that canopy that sits there. And there's a good spot where they could sit and take a break.
We could put some bike racks there.
But to Carol's point, that's fine if you're coming from the west, but when you're coming from the east...
Yeah, you need, we need that route coming north, it's so short.
Yeah.
Where do you...
But, you know, even down, when they get down to Rolling Hills Park where the sign is, you could certainly put in addition, hey, there's better access down at Whitney, just keep going down two hundred feet, and you'll find it.
Bicyclists can take whatever route they want to. However, an extra distance between Main and over Bluff as far as biking wise?
They're not gonna care.
A minute or two? It's not an event, you're not out there biking because you're trying to save time and distance. You move back, you're gonna have to climb on, you know?
And I'm guessing we have more people approach us from the west than from the east?
I'd say you're right.
From the west? There are a lot of people from Swan Lake that come in. Oh my gosh.
But is that their terminal, or is that, are they dumping there, and then they dump on?
Dumping at Swan Lake?
Yeah. Sorry, at Swan Lake.
Don't make any difference. You have, you have, we find the signs to tell them where to go, they'll, they'll use the sign.
Don't make any difference, so. They'll, it's a non, it's a non-event, as far as dropping off of Bluff.
With all the building down in the southeast corner down there, out by McFarland, the trail is, is just like Grand Central Station.
Oh, in the summertime, I can, I think every ten minutes there's someone more by my window.
And then behind, it's just constant, people, tons of dogs, tons of dogs, yeah.
Why don't we make a suggestion? You guys are aware of this now, maybe let them go back, and take some time, we, we, after this meeting, we can go drive down there, I can take them. Get some suggestions on that, maybe some cost estimates, probably need some small contract with them to do this work. But please get that part done, then you have a price for that, we have a price for the other section, and we can compare the pros and cons and decide in the next, how quick can... In a couple weeks. So then we have A, we have option A, option B, we have cost estimates, and then we can, then you can make a decision. Yeah.
And what about incorporating it into the Third Street project?
That's Randy.
They need to be aware of that though, so...
Right.
I think, yeah, without the Third Street, I think that that becomes a less, much less viable option, to go Whitney, because at that point, you're dumping them off onto the street again, and that's not a great alternative.
If, if we wanted to get it into the contract, the roadway contract is for next year, 2017.
Right.
So if we knew about it, and, and you knew you wanted to fund it, then it could be incorporated into that, uh, that plan.
With what, drop dead date for that, I mean, if we did do something else?
Oh, it'd probably be... Probably August.
Okay.
If you, if you, like Eric was saying, go from Bluff Street, go over Carroll, and then come up on Carroll to Third Street, that would be a non-event though for, for Third Street.
I was just gonna ask that.
So it could be done at any time on its own.
What, what was the reason for choosing getting up to Third Street versus just coming up Carroll right off of Bluff, or...
Well, I, I went over there Saturday and looked. And when you are standing at the end of Whitney and you're looking up, from the curb to the edge of the sidewalk is probably thirty feet that's currently running down there. So you've got more than ample enough room to put in a ten-foot trail, all the way up to, uh, Third Street. And then when you look, going down Third Street, if you look east, again, there's about a thirty-foot right away from the curb to the edge of the sidewalk. So you'd again have ample room to go down Whitney all the way to Denny's. And when you go look at it, you'll see it, the sidewalk is not just right off the road, it's like twenty feet off the road.
That's what it looks like from the map. The Carroll one looks like there's a lot of big trees though, within that.
There are on Whitney, as you're coming up on the east side of the road, and then going down Third Street, I think there were like two or three sitting there, um, so you'd have to probably take those out. I don't know. What's that?
Even on the ashtrays.
Yeah, yeah, but they're in the right away, they're in the city's right away is the thing, so, but, I mean, I hate cutting down trees as much as the next guy.
Are you guys talking about the north or the south side of Third?
I was talking about Carroll.
We're...
Carroll, like it had big ones.
No, I, yeah, I, I hear that, but when you're talking about Third Street...
On the, on the south side.
South side.
South side.
And so you'll be going through people's parking, basically, between the road and the sidewalk.
Right.
Down through there.
If you go off-street.
Right, well, I would agree to off-street, that's just, I had kids.
They're off-street, it's completely off the road, and you're still got ample ro, room that if you tip over on the trail, you're not gonna fall into the street. So, um, and then if you go up Whitney and then over Third, you never have to cross, you cross one street, um, Second Street, and there's no stop sign there. But when you get to Whitney, there's a stop sign, but you can just curve right around and then go right up Third Street. And you're, there's no stop signs all the way till Denny's, at the four-way stop.
Okay.
Just fleshing in my mind that if you want to cross the railroad tracks at Carroll Street, it's not nearly as safe from vision as it is at Main Street. Now, that's currently, they can maybe build a little closer, but not much, because the railroad owns the land up against the, the Mexican album.
Ran, yeah.
Roger, Roger.
And against the old H and H building. Where down at Carroll, if you're southbound, you're coming out right from a building and boom, there's railroad tracks. So that's just, that's kind of the risk stuff that you work with.
I think Jack is right, have the experts to look at it and come with recommendations, you guys can go up from there, you can discuss it as long as you want, but after you guys take a look at it.
We'll go down and look at it here after the meeting.
I, I never looked at it from the perspective of going down Bluff and then coming up. But, I mean, if you've got enough, if there's enough room there on Bluff, when you go down Whitney, everything's pretty flat, there's no real big, there's no big adjustments between driveways and, and property, like on High Ridge.
Okay.
So, excuse me, one last question to get back to the, the main link from the Sauk Rail Trail. We're talking ten feet, that's what you're saying, we've gotta do, if we do paint that, it would be ten feet up to where we could not widen it any further at the retaining wall, is that correct?
It would be our intention to make everything we can, can put.
That is the standard, okay.
Yeah, that's the standard.
Okay, so where it is eight feet right now, it's very short, that would be widened also, that would be a part of, that would be widened to ten?
To where, I mean, all the way down to the bridge.
Like right before you get to the bridge, it's eight feet, then the bridge is nine.
It's all costs, up to you, up to you guys if you wanna redo that to the bridge.
Probably the reason the bridge is nine compared to the eight-foot trail is because you'll, you'll want a foot of clear distance between the rail and the trail. So that's why they always go wider.
Oh yeah, it's really nice, I mean, it works out well, bikes can pass each other, yeah, it's great.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, very much.
Northeast Trail, is there any questions you guys, in northeast that they worked out in the last plan, is there any you wanna talk about that? The overall master plan, if you have questions or things, and then thinking about that.
Misty, Misty said it earlier, what's the proposal to cross Third? I think that's large, largely important, I mean, I, and I don't have any of the old ones in front of me, so I don't...
Uh, this plan, Randy?
Ultimately, how we have it right now would be to drop off at Griffin, and then we'd have to install some type of crossing there.
At Griffin, and, and the reason that I ask that is because my thought on, and, and maybe this is just being selfish with kids, but my thought on crossing Thirty is that if my kids want to, A, get to the rec center in those places, or B, get out, you know, they could connect to this trail system and ride all the way out to the baseball fields. You know, when I was a kid, we always rode our bikes out to the baseball fields. And we're on the sa, complete south side of town.
Right.
Yeah.
And so, it, it would be, it wouldn't even be feasible for my kids to go over to Griffin Road and then ride all that all the way up to there. I just, I, and I don't know if everybody's on board with this, but we'd have to figure out something to cross somewhere, either in the middle of town or close to Grant Road somewhere, I think that would be much more reasonable and get much more use.
Well, it's the big picture, I mean, you're, you're bringing everybody, you wanna bring everybody into downtown, I get that idea, but you also need to relate to your people in town, your families that are riding, who aren't probably going to take all their kids downtown. They wanna be able to get in a loop throughout the town somewhere, and right now, we, you can't really do that. You get on, you ride, you turn around, and you go back. There's no, I'd like to be able to get on, ride through downtown, get over to Grant Park, go back clear out to the, um, complex, and come back down home, but there's...
It takes time, but that's the ideal.
I was speaking with Jen earlier, uh, loo, looking at, uh, what we have laid out existing right now from a grand scheme of things, and, you know, the, the thing when you look at Carroll is, you've got all your population in the north, you're separated by Highway Thirty and the railroad tracks, and then you've got your trail to the south. And so that's the ultimate thing, yeah, it's great to look for tourism and entertain, uh, people that are not who are around here and show them downtown, but you've got a lot of residents here that if you're wanting to sell them trails, and you're wanting to build trails here, you've also gotta cater to them too. So ultimately, I think what we, what this group needs to look at is how we can get those residents and connect with the greatest asset that you guys have here, the Sauk Rail Trail. I mean, that's what needs to be, that's what needs to happen, and it needs to be safe. You know, you need all, all riders, all age groups to be able to do that as well, and so, whether that's finding a different location to save the crossing, um, something that I think that we need to continue to look at.
And this even stems back to 2006 when, uh, we started working with Shad Battery. This original plan, you know, did try to encompass Swan Lake and have a loop so we can get everyone on the outskirts of town, doesn't necessarily address, you know, Brandon and I is concerned if we want our kids to go out there. Um, so, those are things we, we can attack later, um, have some thoughts on different things, um, to incorporate, the southwest part of town really would struggle with, you know, um, other than the Swan Lake Trail. But this northeast part, this was area, it was a council's decision to focus in on that area to begin with. I really think we, we have, we have one, you know, small hiccup, but, uh, being able to get that through northeast park and then on the north side of those houses, um, maybe someday that might change, uh, we, we don't know anything. But, um, at least this part, um, they're updated dollar bonds, so it's a million dollars. Obviously, I don't think we have the funds to, to do that all together at one time, um, that'd be a huge project. But let, we can definitely look at A and B, address those concerns with the property owners, um, engage Shad Battery to give us a proposal, uh, we have two hundred sixty thousand more?
We have.
Two sixty?
We have, uh, two hundred and forty thousand in the new budget, beginning of July one.
Okay.
And then one hundred, one hundred the next two years, and then hotel motel, then seventeen, eighteen, one fifty, and eighteen, nineteen, one fifty. So we're gonna have two forty, then two fifty, and then two fifty, in those three budget cycles.
What, what, your, your concern, you said on the north end of someone's homes? Are you talking about segment B or?
C.
Oh, okay. I thought we were just dealing with A and B, so now you're down on C, those...
C and D, yeah, um, there's, um, a property owner, that, you know, we've tried to engage to sell us some right away. Yeah, that's C, a small part of B, the north part of northeast park. Have you been to northeast park, they farmed a little segment north of northeast park, we'd like to bring the trail through that. So, those are challenges down the road that we can, uh, discuss. All the other, in A and B, almost all those landowners, for the exception of the church, you know, I've had conversations with family members or the organization, they're all supportive. Some point, if, you know, we decide that, might, uh, talk to the church, go to Sunday service and talk to them.
With a large offering.
Well, another thing to think about, um, you're asking about the best way to leverage the funds that you do have. With the location of segment A being through the schools, that would be a good candidate for, like you say, brought to school, um, or transportation alternative funding. And so, those are ones that usually you have like a twenty, twenty to thirty percent, depending on which grant it is, but, um, maps that you would have, but then they'll kick in a har, large portion of it too, so that can help you get farther with your trails also.
Sure, sure.
That's what I was kinda looking at, was at least segment A, to kinda get that started.
Because that connects these neighborhoods down here over to the school safely, I mean, that's a great candidate for it.
I, I, again, um, I brought this up at our trails meeting, and knowing that we were going to have this proposal from ISU, and one of their bullets is to connect the district with the City of Carroll's, uh, Trails Master Plan, including strengthening the connection to the Sauk Rail Trail. So, I think if, and then improve pedestrian circulation, et cetera. Given that they will be working on that, Jack, are you, are you gonna coordinate working? So we can maybe pull it all together so it makes sense?
Yeah.
You know, and we have something, instead of helders, skelders, something congruent that kind of grows logically.
I think I have a conversation with them early on, showing this plan, this is what we have in place, um, and see what their thoughts are on, you know,
Right, right.
Trail from Grant Park to the Aquatic Center, that's pretty easy, and things like that.
Yeah, and then Jeff mentioned, he wasn't at our meeting.
Jeff's around?
Yeah, that, thank you.
Yeah.
The, the, the trail, he has all the information, uh, the trail, um, is indicated on the most recent master plan, the trail going through Grant Park, which, you know, we talked about.
Yeah.
You know, we, we wanna really take advantage of, of all the amenities down there, so...
Mentioned that to them, that's...
We have all sorts of ideas.
Our staff, uh, park superintendent, especially Scott Archer, has been thinking about the trail through there, and that's part of our...
It would be great with the Carroll Fest and, and, uh, you know, all the, all the things we've done recently there, thanks.
Clay, are you still there?
I'm sleeping. Yeah, I'm, I'm here.
Oh, I didn't, did you have any comments or anything, I didn't wanna leave you out.
No, I appreciate that, uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I do not at this time, I'm just listening.
Okay, very good, thank you, I'll check with you one more time.
I'll be here.
Okay, thanks, Clay. So quiet over there in the box, I thought, I better check to make sure.
He was so quiet over there in the box, I thought, I better check to make sure he wasn't getting left out.
We, we can, well, we can't take action on anything tonight, but are we at the point where we want, maybe wanna look at engaging with
Yes.
Shad to see what A, A and B maybe, and if we get, don't have money to do B, but maybe you look at a design.
Yes.
We're ready.
Uh, and I, I think the, the whole thing with that Whitney Street to bring people in, I, I think that,
We can look at that.
That's such a viable option at this time, but to incorporate it in so that people aren't having to go three years, you know, they're gonna go a year for the sewers, a year for the paving, and then if you were to put a trail through, that'd be three years, you could probably incorporate it all at once.
If this isn't done far enough, are you talking about potentially losing a grant we could get on segment A? You said, you said about a, a grant that connected the school systems?
I, I think A, yeah, A, um, there's, you know, can we talk to the church, the school, and make sure that they're on board with giving us right-of-way or that? That's a pretty easy funded.
Section.
Section, because you have a plan that's connected down.
Okay, okay.
You have, you're showing a future plan, you have your dollar must, you stress adding your grant application. This is segment A of a much bigger plan.
And I'm sure that happens a lot.
Yes, oh, yeah, all the grants I review with the REIT grants that they'll show that.
Okay.
And, you know, a lot of times these grant applications, if they support you in A, they, they wanna see the project.
And we have allotted money in our budget for it.
You, you have money, you've got the design and money, those right, really good, it looks like a shovel-ready.
Any other questions or comments from anybody else?
I just wanna, um, I just wanna offer up that I think tonight's discussion has been really well, probably better than some conversations that have happened in the past, and it is a good time for us to start talking about all of this stuff, not just trails, not just what's going on downtown by Grant Park, but there are so many things that need to be happening within the boundaries of Carroll. And it is gonna take money, but like we noticed, you know, a couple weeks ago, we're able to get that money at such a low rate, we really, really, really need to be looking at, what is our big master plan? When we talk in August or whenever we meet, we need to be aggressive, we need to make, we need to have a big list, we need to be looking at all those things. I'm a big picture thinker, so I would really like all of you to join me in that, and make a big list. And that doesn't mean we have to get it all done immediately, but what are you all envisioning for Carroll? Because I see lots, and if we don't have a bit more, we're not gonna pull those pe, those people to town, whether it's just riding their bikes in to come downtown, whether it's moving here, we're talking about the gig thing with Western Iowa Networks. I mean, you're looking to bring people in, and we gotta make sure, and we gotta stay positive and forward-moving, and not just stop at the trails, there's many more things to be talked about. And I am all in it for getting Carroll where it needs to be, to get people coming in here, we're talking about the rec, we're talking about, and yes, it's gonna be money, but we need to show the taxpayers that we're gonna do it in the, in the most responsible way we can. And by doing it at the rate we can get it at right now, we need to be talking about that.
Ten years ago, we engaged, that, right before I started, um, to do a master plan that showed the trail, showed the aquatic center, showed, uh, um, skate park, the ten, the test park, so it was a special project. So maybe, you know, in the next year or something, we'll look at revitalizing, redoing a complete citywide master plan. It was a very good report with them.
But maybe Griffin right now isn't where it needs to cross, I mean, you know, those type of things, maybe we just don't need to take it and continue to go forward, but actually revisit and say, is this really the best option right now?
Focus more on what we can do to connect in the town, in the town to start with, and then we'll probably branch out, I think there's a viable solution to get people off the Sock Trail into town, but maybe focus in town so that, you know, we don't have any more accidents on bikes.
See, we're trying to get a new, come up with a different trail logo, and get more futuristic, build one we have, we wanna put up signs, give maybe a shutter house down on, down at, who knows, Texas. Just, you know, and, and the, the sign logo would have Carroll, Welcome to Carroll, Iowa, on it. We're raising funds through the Sock Rail Trail Association to do all that, you know, we're gonna continue to do that. I mean, Russ just got a grant for the last bike bridges, so all the Carroll County bridges will be done. So we've gotten all of them done in, what, three years?
Yeah, more years.
So we've got all the Carroll County bridges redone.
There's a fundraiser April third at Whiskey Run, so, do you show up?
Couple bikes and a lot of bike gear and a lot of gift certificates to.
Now Vaughn Kettles only be singing, so bring air books.
Another thing, from, from the meeting Thursday night, that was a good point, Jason and I talked after the meeting, he's the director out of Swan Lake, of looking through, or at least the city portion, City of Carroll, Carroll County, that area, of putting some of the signs up. Remember the nice-looking signs we have at the golf course, those hard plastic, nice-looking? Um, I think, you know, we can look, Jason and I are gonna get together and decide maybe where we wanna put signs, and go with that type of sign that's durable, they last a long time, they look nice, and it's a local company that's built, uh, designed.
And they've made a big commitment to that, because they just, they just redid all that, resurfaced all that, so.
Yeah, so hopefully in the next six months or so, Jason and I will get together and look at, you know, through the city part, what you guys do up through the other areas, that's.
Well, Drew's company has already basically said, when they built that building down there, they put everything in their force to actually hook something into, make, into that's access, and make that a separate bike area instead of trying to shove everything in rolling hills. And you're still gonna have rolling hills, but there's another area on the other side to take care of too. Then at least we'd have a couple of trailheads and maybe a pretty nice, so.
Good enough signs and we'll be the Waldro of.
Yeah.
Of bike trails.
Sturgis, uh, Sturgis, I can hear you, see it coming.
Nickel cones somewhere.
Well, it's amazing how big it's gotten in the state, it's just hard to get them out here, but we're slowly, and then, you know, there's gonna be, sort of, put some trees along the thing, and, you know, who knows? A lot of people like to do it, so. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, everyone, I appreciate it, I think we all do, and thanks for the discussion, I think we got a lot done.
Quick reminder what you need from me, you know, going forward, you want me to look at, uh, agreement with them, on segment A and B?
Yeah, I think that's.
Design, how, how they are with going and negotiating, talk with the landowners, if they have any information, but I feel pretty comfortable with those, in those sections, we can talk.
In addition, we also want to. We'll look forward to the, the Whitney plan too, right?
Yeah, as far as the A and the Main Street. We received a, we negotiated, or we discussed a little bit about their last agreement, and they've come in a little bit lower dollar amount for the Main Street, uh, they tightened the numbers up, so we do have that proposal. Uh, we can still, moving forward to that a little bit quicker maybe with Whitney, but otherwise we present them all at the same time, too. So, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Hey, Jack?
Oh.
Is that separate topic, golf course, is it open?
Yeah, it's open Saturday. Uh, real quick, um, with that, Scott Hockenson, the new golf superintendent, and Brenda put stuff out on Facebook and tried to email all the members, and just got the word out, we have probably sixty, fifty to sixty volunteers on Saturday, raking. Uh, it just really helped, but we did that in staff, it would take days. So we had a lot of volunteers out there helping clean up, doing things, so we were able to open Saturday afternoon. Anticipating some snow.
I'm not hearing that much.
You know, once or twice before the real golfing starts, but they were open Saturdays. And Brenda's out there taking memberships, so.
Beverage truck was out that day?
I don't believe so, no, no. At the end, we did give them hot water and hot dogs, so we found them. Well, I think golf teams were out there, golf members with their kids, it was a fun day, so.
Clay, you still there? Ask, any other comments or anything?
No, sir, thank you very much.
You bet, uh, if not, I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Base?
Yes.
Cut?
Yes.
Flusner?
Yes.
Kinley?
Yep.
Minami?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
We are adjourned.